Really, really cute.
I get it in ten seconds.
It's under.
I heard someone in here.
I'd like to call to order a regular meeting of the Board of Education, February 21st, 2023, at 7 o'clock PM. Cindy, could you please call the roll?
Dremel?
Here.
Kilber?
Here.
Flock?
Here.
Lo? Mathis?
Here.
Meadows?
Present.
Meitzler?
Here.
Since our last meeting, we lost a student at Rotolo Middle School, and we wanted to just take a moment of silence so that we could reflect on that loss before we said the pledge.
And Mrs. Meitzler, would you lead us in the pledge now, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sorry. It's okay. Dr. Hitchens, are there any changes or items removed from or added to the agenda?
I would say we're going to start with some celebrations, so let's add that to the agenda.
Oh, yes, we are going to start with celebrations because we've had a number of teachers that have been honored for different things. And so we have various board members who are going to do a shout out for those teachers on behalf of the whole board. So I honestly don't know who else. Got a shout out, Erin?
Erin does.
Sure do. I would like to congratulate Kristy Geeson from RMS, who is nominated by her colleague, Jeff Thomas, who's in the audience today. She recently earned the ISBE Award of Meritorious Service, so we are very, very pleased to acknowledge that accomplishment. Well deserved.
I have the honor of speaking a little bit about Chad Clery, who's a teacher over at Grace McWayne. They took, he kind of led a group of first grade students over to Marklin, which is out by the Grace McWayne area, Mill Creek area, which is a center for adults and children with kind of profound special needs and special healthcare needs. So they went out there and heard about kind of goods and services. But while they were there, they were surprised a bit because Mr. Clery was presented with a Volunteer of the Year Award from the Marklin staff. He often comes out there to volunteer, will bring some of the older kids that he works with over at Cane Land. So we congratulate him on that and are very thrilled with the good work that he and is doing out there and how he's breaking that awareness, bringing that awareness and that effort to the kids at Grace McWayne.
Anyone familiar with BPS 101 knows that we have an amazing music program. And we're super excited to announce that Lisa Hatfield is honored as one of the 2023 Yamaha 40 Under 40 Excellence in Music Education winners. She's our fifth grade band and orchestra teacher for all of our elementary schools. And I love it because her main goal is to have students really love playing their instruments. Here, I think, was the most amazing thing I read, her program has a retention rate that is well over 90%. And she's an amazing educator. She creates a collaborative and engaging program. She involves other music teachers. She brings older students back to support what the fifth graders are doing. And I love this. She's really creative, enthusiastic. I know her because my children have all been in the music program. And she will do different things, like she'll use a basketball to help kids understand beat. She will let them build Legos so that students understand how rhythms build together. And I thought this was fun. She had students learning to play an octave from a TikTok song. So she's incorporating all sorts of different, different and creative ideas. She shares her knowledge by teaching courses on integrating tech into school music courses. So she's just an amazing educator, and we are incredibly excited and proud to celebrate this honor with Mrs. Hatfield.
My turn? Okay. So I'll be reading a statement on behalf of Chris Low, my colleague, who is not here this evening. So it starts, "Fellow Batavians, let me begin by apologizing for my absence. As you may know, our high school girls' basketball team won regionals last week. Today is the first game of the sectional tournament versus St. Charles North. As much as I enjoy board meetings, it is a priority for our family to support one another, and I need to be there for my daughter and her team. I hope you understand. However, even though I can't be here, I want to take a moment to recognize some amazing teachers deserving of our appreciation. Over the past weeks, we have seen some incredible accolades bestowed upon our staff. As the board representative for the high school, I want to highlight two who define what it means to be a Bulldog. Both teachers are members of Batavia's high school's English department, and I have been fortunate enough to have my children taught by both. The first I would like to highlight is Kim Pearlman. She is currently my daughter's teacher for two blocks, teaching her both public speaking and AP language. My daughter says she really knows what she's talking about, and that's high praise from a child who doesn't talk about her classes or teachers very often. My son also had her. When I told him she had been nominated, he said, "She deserves it." As parents, my wife and I see the time and care that goes into Kim's teaching and the consistent email updates she sends to parents, and the engagement of our children with her assignments. It is evident she goes above and beyond what we typically expect. That is why I wasn't surprised to hear that she has been nominated by her peers to be the Kane County Educator of the Year. It is a well-deserved honor. In fact, our staff is putting together a scrapbook to support her. If your family has been impacted by Kim and you'd like to write a letter of support, you can send them to marnieharm@marnie.hym@bps101.net. I apologize for the late notice, but those letters of support need to be in, need to be received by the end of February. Congratulations, Kim, and good luck." We also have another teacher to celebrate, Amber Jersa. This one is a bit more personal. I met her a few years ago when she was my son's teacher. Our nation was struggling with racial justice, and our district began to focus on DEI work. I have watched this teacher work and grow tremendously over the past few years. I have seen her struggle with the stress, tears, and self-doubt this work can bring with it. She has grown from an amazing classroom teacher into an amazing advocate for all of our students, and she has become a community leader. From the beginning, I saw her willingness to invest her own time and money to educate herself on diversity, equity, inclusion, and justice, taking any training she could so she can better serve our kids. I've seen her efforts inspire students, staff, and the community. After all of her struggles, it is amazing to see her recognized by local state, by local, state, and national organizations, and rewarded for her leadership efforts. I have no doubt she is the biggest advocate and local expert when it comes to making everyone feel welcome in our schools and community. I cannot think of a better teacher deserving of the honor of North Suburban Teacher of the Year. Congratulations. And congratulations on being one of the 12 finalists for Illinois Teacher of the Year. Thank you for inviting me, Chris Low, to represent our district and share in your amazing moment at the Teacher of the Year banquet this weekend. I was excited to be there, and I'm hoping our town will be home to the Illinois Teacher of the Year. No matter how things turn out, please know our town is incredibly proud of you and everything you give to make Batavia a better place. I am honored to serve as a board member in a district with such amazing teachers and staff. I hope we, as a community and a district, recognize excellence in our staff when we find it, and do everything we can to elevate these folks and learn from them. When it comes to classroom success, they are examples we should promote and encourage. We are extremely fortunate to have such teachers who are willing to sacrifice so much of themselves for our children. In today's environment, teachers are in short supply, and we should be thankful when such amazing teachers choose to stay here. From the bottom of my heart, thank you for all the hard work you do and the amazing positive influence you have on our children, staff, and community. Thank you for personally teaching my children and making them better human beings. These awards are well-deserved. Thank you for sharing your skills with our community."
I know we've got a number of our educators in the audience who were honored. Could you guys stand up just so everyone can see who you are? All right, that was amazing. We love to start with celebrations. The next item on our agenda is public comment. Do you believe we have someone here on public comment? All right, so welcome to the meeting of the Board of Education. If anyone wishes to address the board this evening, please see our recording secretary, Cindy, to submit a form for addressing the board. We need you to put your full name and address on the form, as we're required by state law to keep a detailed set of minutes of our meetings. And in general, we don't answer questions or engage in dialogue during public comment. It doesn't mean that we don't take your concerns or comments seriously. We value active community participation in our endeavors, and we encourage people to engage with the district using our, excuse me, our appropriate channels and systems designed with your input in mind. But we're not involved in the day-to-day operations of the district and can't engage in district business individually. But if you have specific questions or concerns you'd like to further engage with the district, you can submit your questions using the link on the website or let Cindy know tonight, and we'll make sure to follow up with you. I'm going to hand it over to our communications manager, Holly Deichman, and she'll explain the public comment process.
Thank you, President General. Thank you all for joining us this evening. Speakers will be called up in order of form submission. We have two speakers this evening. The first form received is the first person invited to speak. When your name is called, please come to the podium so that you can be heard, and the cameras will point towards you. All individuals speaking will be limited to three minutes. I will project a three-minute timer up onto the screen, and when you see that, and we'll get it started once you're settled on the podium. During any time during this meeting, written comments may be submitted to our recording secretary, Sidney Rodriguez. Speakers should conduct themselves with civility and respect towards everyone in this room. Our first speaker is Walter Lubis.
All right. Hello, my name is Walter Lubis. I'm a teacher and a coach in St. Charles District 303, but more importantly, I've been a citizen of Batavia for over six years. I mention my work in St. Charles because I'm here regarding an incident between Batavia and St. Charles East High School girls JV basketball teams that took place on February 4th of this year. During this game, a player from Batavia High School threw an unprovoked, loaded-up forearm to the back of one of my player's heads, not once, but twice. And then after these two hits were not reacted to, the player came around the front and elbowed her directly in the nose, knocking her back so hard that she hit her head on the floor. She has had concussion symptoms for now three weeks that she's still feeling. So immediately after this incident, a parent of mine sent a clip of what happened to athletic director Dave Andrews and the principal of Batavia High School. The response from Mr. Andrews is that they pride themselves on hard-nosed athletics, and they'll make sure that the player be held accountable, and all players will learn from this. A three-game suspension was handed down, and an apology was to be passed on from him in a phone call to my athletic director, to anyone who would listen to an apology over the phone. And to be perfectly honest, the response from the Batavia School District has left me feeling that there was a real lack of recognition of the severity of the incident, and almost no ownership took place. If you saw the video of the incident, I think you would agree. I could go on and on about my frustrations as a coach and how the situation was handled, but I'm here tonight to speak as a citizen of Batavia, not as a St. Charles basketball coach. As a citizen of Batavia, who has two small children about to enter the school system, I want to know that my children were brought up in a district that prioritizes sportsmanship and teaches important life lessons about how to be a respectful member of society. If my sons choose to become athletes and participate in high school sports, I will have some major reservations about what they are going to be learning on and off the field under this administration. I want them to be part of programs where sportsmanship and learning and decency are more than, are more important than winning the game. In the wake of this incident, I have major concerns about what the precedent will be for sportsmanship, respectable behavior, and accountability for your actions in 10 years' time when my children are at the high school. While I may not be aware of every single detail regarding this incident, I feel that there was a real lack of accountability by the Batavia District for what took place. And if this is how this one hard-nosed athletics incident was handled, it makes me wonder how many others have been handled similar. I don't believe that a similar attack would have been handled the same if it was caught on video in the hallways of Batavia High School. So what makes something like this different? Is it because athletes were involved on a court? I ask what you guys would be feeling if it was your daughter being elbowed in the head three times in a row. I urge you to consider the policies set forward by the Batavias' code of conduct, and includes strict and specific disciplinary action for extreme aggression and physical attacks such as this, because it's not there right now. I've looked, and unless I'm missing something, I haven't seen it. And I hope you guys can reflect on the values of Batavia sports that is instilling in our youth. Sorry to be negative. Congratulations, teacher.
Our next speaker is Eli Bortner.
Hello, everybody. I'm Eli Bortner. I graduated Batavia High School in 2018. So I come here today to talk about the referendum revote. In history, I've always learned that if you have a vote and something didn't, there was wording or confusion, it was my belief that it was, the onus was on me as a person to make sure it was worded correctly, and that any outcome was my responsibility. I understand that it is the school board's job to put forward legislation that they believe is important to the district, and I respect that greatly. I just believe personally that, given the vote, I understand there may have been some confusion, but personally, if I, as a citizen myself, I don't know if I would have been given a retry. So that is all I'd like to say. That was it. Thank you.
Thanks. Next item on our agenda is our BPS partners. I do not see our student ambassadors here tonight, so I'm going to invite Todd Swanson to the podium. Oh, yes. Thank you. Oh, they were first. I'm so sorry.
That's all right.
The writing's kind of small.
So there's an old saying that says, "Great minds think alike." Unbeknownst to me, as I was working on my speech for tonight, which is going to focus on celebrations, I didn't know the board was going to be celebrating some of our same people as well. So we may have some of the same messages that are shared, but by gosh, it's worth repeating for these people that are up here. So, good evening, members of the Board of Education. Tonight, my message will be one of celebration. I've invited some of our amazing BPS educators to join me at the podium, so we all can recognize them for their accomplishments and recent accolades earned from outside of our BPS community. First off, I'd like to introduce Lisa Hatfield, an amazing elementary band and orchestra teacher who this year is serving our fifth graders at every elementary school. In looking at her website, the first news that I saw was that this year, over 200 fifth graders from across the district signed up for their first year of band and orchestra in our elementary schools. With teachers like Mrs. Hatfield, along with her music educator colleagues, it's no wonder that our youngsters are so excited to join band and orchestra. And it's no wonder yet again that Batavia has earned many national recognitions, such as the National Association of Music Merchants Foundation Best Communities for Music Education, eight times running. However, tonight, we are here to honor Mrs. Hatfield for being the recipient of the 2023 Yamaha 40 Under 40 Excellence in Music Education Award. Lisa was chosen as an outstanding music educator who is making a difference by growing and strengthening the music program in Batavia. These 40 educators, all under the age of 40, showcase the following characteristics: Action, which is offering innovation and imaginative solutions and achieving plans and objectives; Courage, proposing and implementing new or bold ideas; Creativity, showing innovation and imagination in achieving plans and objectives; and Growth, establishing, growing, or improving music education in their schools and communities. We didn't need Yamaha to tell us how awesome Mrs. Hatfield is. All you have to do is ask any student who currently has her or has had her in the past, and they will all say how much fun she makes music, and how she inspires them to continue with the program all the way until they graduate, and maybe even beyond into college as well, as many Batavia graduates have done. So for being honored as one of 40 music educators from across the country for the Yamaha 40 Under 40 Music Award, congratulations to Lisa Hatfield. Our next two honorees are Kristy Geeson and Amber Jersa. Both of these incredible educators have been awarded major distinctions from the Illinois School Board, Illinois State School Board of Education. Since 1970, the Illinois State Board of Education has sponsored the Those Who Excel and Teacher of the Year programs to honor educators who have made significant contributions to our state's public and non-public elementary and secondary schools. Awards are presented in seven categories: Classroom Teachers, Early Career Educators, which are teachers who have taught from one to four years; School Administrators, Student Support Personnel, Educational Service Personnel, Community Volunteers, and Teams. Application materials are evaluated by a selection committee composed of individuals who represent a variety of educational organizations, and all awardees will be honored at an annual banquet in the spring. Leading off our ISBE Award winners tonight is Kristy Geeson. Kristy is a math teacher at Rotolo Middle School in the sixth grade, sixth grade, right? Okay, I want to make sure I got it right, and is in her 22nd year of teaching in Batavia. She's taken on many roles in the BEA, such as being a building rep for Rotolo, and currently is the chair of our elections committee. However, the accomplishment that I want to highlight tonight is for Kristy being named by the Illinois State Board of Education as a recipient of the Meritorious Service Award for 2023. This year, ISBE has honored 490 of Illinois's most outstanding educators for their extraordinary contributions to education across the state through its annual Those Who Excel campaign. And this meritorious award that Kristy has earned is given to those who have shown perseverance, ingenuity, and above all, dedication to their education by helping to build lifelong learners who will go out and make a positive impact in the world. Congratulations, Kristy, on this outstanding accomplishment and for your service to BPS. Next, I would like to congratulate Amber Jersa, English teacher from Batavia High School. In addition to her roles in BEA as a building rep for the high school and the chair of our newly formed BEA Equity Committee, Amber is one of only 13 finalists for the 2023 Illinois Teacher of the Year, the state's top honor for classroom teachers. The 13 finalists come from specific geographic areas in our state, and Amber is the finalist representing the North Suburban District. Interim State Superintendent of Education Krish Mohib says, "Our finalists for Teacher of the Year are amazing. They are pushing the envelope in the classroom, empowering their students, and constantly striving to strengthen their craft. We are so proud to have these excellent educators." We wish Amber all the best moving forward to hopefully become the Illinois Teacher of the Year for 2023. Congratulations, Amber. I've also recently learned, just today, in fact, that Chad Clery, a first-grade teacher at Grace McWayne Elementary, was presented with the Volunteer of the Year Award from Marklin staff during a recent field trip with his students, and that our BHS English teacher, Kim Pearlman, has been nominated for Kane County Educator of the Year as well. I will be getting some more information about them, and you guys already have some great information as well, and be sharing some more about their accomplishments at future meetings. So again, congratulations to Chad and to Kim as well. And finally, in the Better Late Than Never category, I want to recognize all of our educators. And by educator, I mean each and every person who has a hand in shaping the lives of our students. Certified staff, support staff, paraprofessionals, custodians, bus drivers, lunch ladies, nurses, campus, campus monitors, administrators, every person who makes a difference in the lives of a student in Batavia, this accolade is for you. Each year, the Illinois School Report Card is released by ISBE. Schools are looked at using multiple measures to assign a level of performance to them. There are four levels given by the state board, but I'm only going to focus on the top two distinctions given to our schools: commendable and exemplary. Here are ISBE's definitions of these top two distinctions. Exemplary schools are schools performing in the top 10% of schools statewide with no underperforming student groups. And commendable, a school that has no underperforming student groups, a graduation rate of 67% or greater, and whose performance is not in the top 10% of schools statewide. Due to the commitment to excellence that our staff exhibits on a daily basis, I am happy to congratulate the staff members at Batavia High School, Rotolo Middle School, Grace McWayne Elementary, JB Nelson Elementary I had these numbered, honestly, JB Nelson Elementary, for their commitment to excellence of their staff that exhibit on a of their staff that exhibit on a daily basis and achieving the commendable status for the 2021-2022 School Report Card. Then, that leaves us with Alice Gusterson Elementary, H.C. Storm Elementary, and Hooverwood Elementary, all earning exemplary honors for the 2021-22 school year, which I'll remind everyone who's listening means that these three schools were in the top ten percent of all schools in the state. In spite of every obstacle that is thrown their way, there are no better examples of dedication, perseverance, rising above, and championing our students and Batavia's educators. I'm proud of each and every one of you and honored to call you all my colleagues. Congratulations once again to Lisa, Kristi, Amber, Chad, and Kim on your recognitions, and to the BPS 101 staff who don't hear it at all, or even if you do, nowhere nearly enough. Thank you for your heart. Thank you for your sweat, and some of you sweat a lot more than others. Thank you for the tears you shed for your students. Thank you for the smiles that you share, and above all, thank you for making a difference in the lives of the children of Batavia. And now, I'd like to allow our honorees just a quick chance to say a few words that they would like to.
I'll go first because I'm losing my voice. I've just been yelling over too many trumpets or something. But thank you so much. I have said it. I have screamed it from the, the mountaintops of how much Batavia loves and supports their music education, and this is just another example on us coming to the forefront and, and showing how important music is for our students. All my students know now is that I'm forty. I said, under forty, under forty, children. But, but this has been a great, a great surprise, and, and like, thank you, everybody.
I wrote some notes because I get really nervous talking in front of crowds. I can do it with kids, but this award really should be presented to my amazing colleagues, like you were saying. If it wasn't for their support, guidance, and continued professionalism, I would not be recognized today. I also want to thank all the wonderful students I've had over the past twenty years, some of them are your kids, for challenging me, teaching me, and always making me smile. Living and teaching in this incredible community is a word itself. So thank you very much.
Mine's a little longer. I'm practicing for my speech at the reception on Saturday. So gotta get used to talking in front of the crowds now. The first time I ever spoke in front of the board asking for more of a focus on short-term equity efforts was April of 2022. If you would have told me I'd be standing here less than a year later being recognized for an award like this, I would not have believed you. I am so thankful to make Batavia history as the 2023 North Suburban Regional Teacher of the Year. I'm honored to be able to represent Batavia as one of the thirteen finalists for Illinois Teacher of the Year. When I learned from the Illinois Superintendent that I won this award, I was told that I was receiving it because of my relentless pursuit of equity for our students. All of our students deserve to feel like they belong, and it is my goal to continue striving for this. They deserve an environment a hundred percent committed to ensuring they feel like they belong, and we owe it to them to provide this and do it sooner rather than later. I'm so grateful for this recognition, and I want to take some time to express my appreciation to those who have helped me get here. I want to express my gratitude for the support and encouragement I've received from my fellow staff members, students, and parents, and community members. The fact that you all believe in me and trust my leadership means everything to me. You've been there during the times I wanted to give up, but you encouraged me to take the time I needed while you carried on in my place. That's a true ally. You refuse to sit on the sidelines. I could not have done this without your help. Recently, I've had people ask how they can become more involved with our grassroots campaign as we work to prioritize our work on ensuring all students belong. To do this, speak up when you see injustice and inequities within our district and community. Use the chain of, of command by reaching out to principals, our administration, and the board. Let them know how you feel about the district's current equity efforts and any suggestions that you may have. Let fam, let family and friends know that it is not okay when they are showing bigoted behavior. Though these are difficult conversations, this is how we change the system that has caused our students so much trauma. It is okay if we mess up and say the wrong thing. We need to own it, learn from it, and do better next time. We owe this to our students. We just do this with, we need to do this with fidelity so we can be active in helping us knock down these systemic barriers for our students. Doing the right thing is difficult, but it's worth it. In honor of Black History Month, I want to close with a quote from Martin Luther King Jr. that I just recently discovered. I felt a connection to it with us being the same age. And his quote is, "You may be thirty-eight years old, as I happen to be, and one day, some great opportunity stands before you and calls you to stand up for some great principle, some great issue, some great cause, and you refuse to do it because you're afraid. You refuse to do it because you want to live longer. You're afraid to lose that job, or you are afraid that you will be criticized or that you will lose your popularity. So you refuse to take the stand. Well, you may go on and live until you're ninety, but you're just as dead at thirty-eight as you would be at ninety, and the cessation of breathing in your life is but the belated announcement of an earlier death of the spirit." Thank you again, and I cannot wait to represent our amazing community as a finalist for the Illinois Teacher of the Year.
My goodness, an impromptu for the speech teacher. I'm still getting kind of used to this because I was very floored when I was told about the nomination. I really think that the four of us are representative of the educators that we have in this district. It's not just the four of us. It's every teacher, every custodian, every paraprofessional, every single person who's in that building, every admin who are working to help our students. And it's the kids who are in our classroom, which I have had many, many of your children in my classroom, that I think bring us there every day just to, I think, help them find their voice and help them find what their purpose is and know that they will make a difference in this world. And that's what we do every day. So thank you.
I think we've all have seen, we have great reason to celebrate in our district. So congratulations once again to all of our honorees, and thank you all.
Thanks, Todd. Now, I'd like to invite up a representative from the Batavia Special Education Partners Network. Do I have that backwards? BSP?
It says partners.
Well, this isn't a tough act to follow. Oh, my goodness. Oh, wow. Yes, we will do our best. Well, good evening. My name is Diane Yama Hone, and I am the parent chair for the Batavia Special Education Parent Network, or BSPN for short. We work in collaboration with BPS, namely with this amazing woman here, Leanne Rodriguez, speech therapist in early childhood at HES, as well as with Carrie Rue, the director of special education. I am, we're all here to help share who we are because a lot of people think we're just a newly formed group, and we're not. Actually, this organization started about thirteen years ago, and so we just want to share that we're here. BSPN includes parents, guardians, special education teachers, school therapists, and administrators within the BPS 101. And our primary goal is to create a support network for parents of special education students. As a parent myself, to be a parent is hard, but to be a parent of a child with special needs is really hard. And to have a network, any kind of network or support, is, is, is just all you need because not a lot of parents have that. And so, we're here, whether your child has an individualized education plan, a 504 plan, just receives extra supports or therapies, we're here for you. We offer a number of events throughout the school year, such as various presentations showcasing our amazing talented staff that we have here at BPS and their specialists. We offer coffee chats, whether they're with, in Rotolo High School, any of the administration, but we also just do parent chats. So we can have a nonjudgmental way of just sitting, and whether it's to laugh, cry, celebrate, looking for, who do you use for a dentist? We're here. And we also like to have some fun, too. We just were at the brewery at Dirty Shelter the other day. So it's just not all about, you know, coffee. But our largest event is our Parent Resource Fair, and this year is actually our tenth year. It's this Thursday, February 23rd. It's at the Batavia High School in the cafeteria. It is an opportunity to learn about community resources for students from early childhood all the way through age twenty-two plus. It includes recreation opportunities, therapy providers, transition planning, advocacy and support. You name it, they're there. We actually have almost fifty organizations and agencies attending this year. Last year, I think we had sixteen. So we have a broad audience that we're here to support. So we have a lot of amazing folks, including our fire department, our police department, our library, just as an example, that there, our community itself is here. The mission is free. It's not just for Batavia community, though. We welcome any families within our neighboring communities and towns to please come out. And you don't even need to have a child that's receiving any special education services. You may even have someone who's just looking for some extra therapy supports. They'll be there. We put some flyers out by the front desk here. So if you don't remember our webpage, if you want to know exactly who all is coming, or to learn more about our group, sign up for our email list to receive updates as to what all the happenings are, and to see all the other upcoming events we have for the year, you can visit BSPN-batavia.org.
Do you have anything you want to add?
This lovely lady has been amazing and has taken the reins and has done a ton of work to gather so many resources for our families. So we are really looking forward to Thursday night's event, and we just really would love a large crowd. So if we could help spread the word and get as many families within our district, outside of the district, to come and, and just visit with our vendors. I know that we always get such positive feedback from families that do attend, and we just really, you know, thankful for the administration's support and for all the families that come and help support us. And we just want to be a network and work together for all of our families. So, yeah.
What's the time?
Oh. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, six to seven thirty.
Six to seven thirty.
So you can pop in for however long you're able to. And if you need to bring your children, that's okay, too. I know a lot of the agencies and organizations will love to meet them. I know they want to meet mine, but I don't know if they want her there. So, thank you.
Thank you so much. All right. Next item on our agenda is our committee updates from board members. Erin, we'll start with you. Erin Kilbride.
All right. I've got some notes. So I'm on the insurance committee. They met on February ninth, and we had a, what I would call a robust discussion centered on the recent switch of the district's medical insurance to health program. And as a reminder, this change was recommended by the insurance committee to deliver with the goal of delivering better benefits to our, to help our employees access higher health care. And, you know, the discussion focused on, like any significant change, it's to be expected there'll be some challenges in a transition like that. But you should know that there is steady progress being made. And I do want to single out one person, it's benefits coordinator Kathy Anger for her hard work and time on this. I mean, anytime you switch insurance, there are going to be some hiccups, and she's been tireless in working with employees in the district to make sure that them and their families are receiving the health care they deserve. So we have our meeting next month. I'll provide another update next month. Thank you.
BFY Grant Committee met Monday. I cannot announce anything right now because we will vote on it Thursday, but I think some teachers and individuals will be very pleased. We had some very interesting grants this year. It's nice. Also, BFY has what's called Alumni Nations. If you've not heard of it, Google it, sign up. Even if you are not a graduate, you're a friend of Batavia High School, you go to Batavia High School, you live in Batavia. You might want to become a member of Alumni Nations. And it kind of keeps up with what's going on in the schools, you know, and it's a way to keep track if you've graduated mostly. But they have done something unique for February, and it's called Bulldog Sweethearts. So if you met here in Batavia at the schools, they've asked you to submit your stories, and they have some very interesting stories. And I know Lisa's pulled up a couple, and do you have like a name, like can we throw out a name of a couple? Obviously, it's okay to say their name. They're on the website there.
Right. Well, Matt and Lori Holm, of course, very famous Batavia Bulldog couple.
Well, our mayor and his wife.
Yeah.
So I don't know if they put one on there either.
I don't know if they wrote up a story.
So but interesting stories of people that have met, like junior high, high school, and have gone on to become married and still live in Batavia, or, you know, gone off but still are, you know, associated with. So get a chance, look that up. And scholarships, if you are a graduating senior, graduates can apply for scholarships through BFY. Talk to your counselors. They have all the information. And also, I'm sad to say, the music teacher left, but there is a scholarship out there. It's the second year. It's available. If you are in fifth grade through about, say, sophomore year, there is a scholarship out there for a guitar and guitar lessons. So if you have any interest in that, go to bataviafoundation.org, look under scholarships, and you could get free guitar lessons.
Interesting.
I will not do an update on CAC because they are part of one of our reports later, and we'll get an in-depth update of what they're doing. Craig?
I'm going to have some exciting stuff to talk about next month. We have a meeting tomorrow.
Sure. The stipend committee met, and nothing really to announce. There's a lot of things that might be happening. There's a lot of activity requests. We just passed the deadline for the high school, at least, for, for new activities and groups. But we did discuss that there's been a lot, a lot of requests for, for groups and clubs over the past year, and we're looking to kind of reorganize a little bit, get a little bit more structured towards those requests so that ones that may have been denied in the past could resurface if, you know, if they come back up. Because if, if we have funding available, we don't want to just go with whoever's like, right, who just requested the club last week. If someone had requested something a year ago, and it might be a student who is still in school that wants to do it. So we're, we're trying to get on top of that a little bit more to make it a little bit more, I don't know if fair is the right way to say it, but, you know, first in, first out, so to speak, so that the clubs are getting recognized in the order in which they're requested. So we're gonna, I don't know, was it a four-hour meeting we said we might have for that? Two-hour?
Well, we have a board meeting that night, so we can't quite go four.
Oh, good. I'm happy with that. Maybe we'll have two, two-hour meetings instead. But yeah, there's, so I'm, I'm happy that the stipend committee is looking good. They're, they're definitely really, really being thoughtful and considerate about where the funds are going to go. So.
Good. Thanks, Erin Day. Erin?
Equity team met this month, and the team members shared their professional learning over the prior month related to standards of students pertaining to equity, staff, instruction, and parents, and community. And the team broke into small groups to begin their planning around staff, students, and the families and community that they serve. And they began to set goals and indicators that they'll be watching out for. That's all for me.
Will they be providing an update to us next month?
I believe so.
They did their update in December. They might.
I thought I saw some.
Yeah, yeah. They, if they have their plan ready, they're going to present it in March. If not, that was like a, a stretch goal for them.
Okay.
If they're ready to present their plan.
I was just unsure. I thought I saw it. Sorry.
Yeah, yeah. They did. It was in there. That's their stretch goal.
Awesome. All right. That's it for committee updates. The next item on our agenda is our consent agenda, which allows us to approve a number of routine business items, all of which are detailed in the board book. And we're going to ask Mr. Pierce to take us through that consent agenda.
That's right. Here we go. Four point one and four point two are the approval of the January 24th, 2023 meeting and closed session minutes. Four point three is our monthly personnel report. Four point four is our monthly payroll and bills. Four point five. monthly payroll and bills. 4.5 is destruction of our closed session recordings from August 24th, 2021. 4.6 is the review of our closed session minutes. 4.7 is the approval to renew student photography contract. 4.8 is the disposal of some surplus property. And finally, 4.9 is the approval of the consent agenda.
All right. Are there any items to be removed or for clarification tonight? All right. Then I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Moved by Meitzler, second by Meadows. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Consent agenda is approved as presented. Next item on our agenda is reports. I'll hand that over to Dr. Hitchens.
Great. We have five reports tonight. None of them require action. The first two are for information. They're, they're every month. Do you have any questions about those two reports that you see every month?
No.
And then the next one is collaborative groups. I'm probably just going to turn it over to Brad if that's okay with you, Kathy.
Yes.
This is a part of an ongoing effort to make sure that the community is aware of our collaborative groups that function behind the scenes to really support almost every aspect of the district. In this month, we're highlighting two of our groups. One is our Curriculum and Assessment Advisory Council, and they really oversee a lot of the work around curriculum. In the update, their focus for this year is around salt teams, which are subject area leadership teams. And specifically, we have teams working in English, math, and social studies. And those teams are going through a process of really doing a program review, so that when we do a bulk of our curriculum work in the summer, in June 5th, 6th, and 7th, we do a bulk of our curriculum work, so that we have time to process that over the summer and then have it ready for teachers. They will know exactly like what work needs to be done to support our teachers and our staff to get the best outcomes for our students. So that is really the bulk of the work for CAC this year, is to make sure that those teams are functional and that they are, are working towards really directing the work of those three subject areas. During the pandemic, a lot of our collaborative groups were not working, and I can say that this one really hurt us to not have this ongoing during that time. There was probably no way to do that. But really, the, the break hurt us with CAC. So Jen Hicks leads that team, and she's really tried to, to work with that team to be collaborative, to model collaboration, but also to get more people involved in that process. So they revamped our, our subject area leadership team kind of structure, brought in more people, and they've had several meetings. They've presented to CAC, and then they'll have a couple more meetings to finish up their program reviews and direct some of the work for the summer. And the next one is RAC, and I won't speak to that because the guy who runs the team is right next to me. So Holly, what do you want to say about RAC?
Geez. Well, RAC stands for the Resource Responsibility Advisory Council, and it looks at resources, how we use them, and keeps an eye on our budget and how things fit together to, so that we can do our very best to support our students and staff. Each year, the board sees work that comes from RAC in the form of the enrollment report, in the form of the five-year financial forecast, and then some behind-the-scenes aspects of itself. And that has been the case for probably maybe six years or so. When the council was actually formed, part of it was to look at, the purpose was to look at how we can get better at the things that we do. And one of the, it's called academic return on investment. And so that is a, a new goal that we have as a group, that we're going to look at these academic returns on investment and try to figure out what works well, particularly if it works well for a certain subset of students, and then make sure that we can expand that and have the resources to do that. Actually, would you, if you wouldn't mind, Holly, would you click on the RAC plan there? It does a much better job of explaining it than I just did.
You did great. I was following along.
Was you? Well, thanks. I appreciate the encouragement, Arjai. If you scroll down a little bit, Holly, there's a graph that kind of illustrates what we're talking about. Keep going. All the way almost to the bottom of the page. Maybe it's the second page. There it is. That's what I'm thinking of. We have a lot of things that go on in the district, and one of the things that we'd like to do to undertake this initiative is actually an inventory of initiatives to figure out how all the pieces fit together in our programs, just to have a high-level understanding. And of course, the purpose isn't to go and audit all these because that would be, well, you would need to have an army of people to do that. That would be a massive undertaking. What we'd like to do is pick one, pick one single initiative and do a deep dive on it and see, one, how much it costs, both its direct and indirect costs, and see how it affects students and whether or not it's doing what that, the purpose of what that initiative or program purports it attempts to do. And when we learn about that, if you scroll down a little bit more, Holly, you know, in the old days, we would just cut a program that we thought didn't work. But that's not what we want to do. It's generally cutting programs doesn't work very well. So it's either the keep or eliminate mindset and using strategies from the district management group. There's a whole list of things that we could consider. We could expand the program. We could keep it. We could segment it, fix it, replace it, or eliminate it. Odds are, we're probably not going to do much of eliminating programs because there's a reason why these programs are here. But if you do a deep dive and you really think about what this, these initiatives and programs attempt to undertake, oftentimes, you know, one size does not fit all, as we know very well. And yet, we have a lot of programs that try to do that. And so we're trying to look at in particular how these segments might fix, fit together, and make sure that we're meeting the needs of all students as best we can with the resources that we have. And so it's a new look. It's quite an undertaking. It's something that we're really excited about, and we think it'll be very valuable for the organization, and it will hopefully build better capacity for us to make decisions about how we allocate resource and what works and what works for this particular group of kids and what works better for this one, and those kind of lines of thinking. And we think it'll be helpful. So that's what we're working on next.
And how, what criteria, how will you decide which initiative to do the deep dive on?
That part, we're not really quite sure. We're going to do this inventory of initiatives, and we're hoping that based on the number of students that it serves and the amount of money, that something will percolate up to the top. We don't want something that's so difficult to tackle that it will be impossible to analyze. But we also don't want to make it too trivial so that it's not meaningful. And so we're trying to strike that balance. And so once we have that inventory and we have the kind of the parameters with which it touches the organization, we'll make that decision. But we're just going to pick one.
And what timeframe are you thinking?
So we're going to pick one, ideally, Josh, geez, that's a good question. I don't remember the answer to it.
We're going to pick one, hopefully to look at next year.
Okay.
So spending time now.
Figuring out.
Figuring out what programs we offer in the whole organization, and pick one to like not only look at, but also build that process.
And then in theory, once we've completed that process, we would have insights for the following budget year. So fiscal '25 is when. So it's definitely a longer arc than what we're used to.
Can you give me an example of a program that you're talking about? And I know this, are we talking about a particular curriculum? Are we talking about how we buy our paper? I mean, I don't know. I just need something to wrap my head around. Like, what are we looking at?
We're looking at things that would have an academic impact, not necessarily how things operate because.
That could be a lot of things.
It could be.
So that's why I'm just trying to.
Yep. And so, let's see.
I know you're reluctant to say something because that would put it out there. But I, I just.
So we are looking for things that are on the academic side. And so this is about the, you know, if we can tie what investments and programs.
I can tie just about anything to the academic side.
It's not just anything. So we want to be specific about the academic return on investment. So to get an academic return on investment, we have to be able to see how kids are learning better as a result of this initiative and what we're investing in it. And so it could be things like our intervention programs.
That's actually what I was just thinking.
Especially. That's where, you know, but those are also very tricky to, to measure, too, and to see, you know, was this implemented with fidelity? And so we can, it's, the easy task is coming up with a list of all the interventions that we undertake. The hard part is how, how it fits in with a broader organization and how you would actually measure it. That's the part that gets really tricky, and it can get really subjective. And we want to keep this as objective as possible. So I don't have a good answer for you, but that's an example of the higher level.
Okay, I can start thinking. I have some interesting ideas.
I like that idea, though, because, I mean, just the intervention, interventions, because we were talking about over-identifying, and I mean, it fits in already to goals that we have. So not that you have to use that one, but it's.
There's a lot to choose from. Yeah.
Other questions or comments? Other than Craig's comment that you finally made RAC interesting after I rotated the mouse?
She reassigned me to somewhere else. Hey.
Yeah, it was, yeah. I thought it was always interesting. I'm just kidding.
Next item on our agenda is a referendum update.
Great. We wanted to just keep this in part of the public conversation and be transparent and be good communicators with the public. So we have, the, the challenge is we have so much information that people were saying, we couldn't find it on your website. So we're always looking at a way that makes it manageable for the user. And we do know, as you, as we've reported in the past, very few people actually visit our website, but we want to make sure when they do visit it, it is easy for them to find the information that they need. And so it's, we always are updating our website and our referendum materials based on what people are requesting. So the, every school has an information group that they're trying to make sure their own staff members within their own school understand the referendum. And so they'll ask us for specific things. Can you give us, can you help us explain, people are still talking about turf. Can you help us explain how turf was paid for? Because there is some information out there that may or may not be correct. So we are creating information sheets, or I don't want to call them FAQs because they're more than that. They go a little bit deeper. They're topics that we do deep dives on. So there is on this newly updated website, at the very top, you would see why it matters, and that is the tagline on many of the posters that you're going to see as we set up our, we try to inform the public and we set up information booths anywhere. And you'll see under why it matters, we're not just here to say vote yes. We're here to say, here's reasons that you might want to vote yes, but here's also reasons, legitimate reasons to vote no. And so we want to be transparent about those types of things. So what happens if it doesn't pass? If you vote no, you'll see that we're going to, the impacts if it's unsuccessful is right on that page. Because I know some of you have said, people have asked you that question, what happens if it doesn't pass? So it should be easy to find. It's in the why it matters section. And then every school has what it means for them. So you could just click on your school to figure out what your school's condition is, when it was built, all of that fun information, concerns with the current facilities, and then anticipated projects, depending on, we've talked about before, the different constraints that we have with the, the interest rates and the construction costs. So we can't promise exactly all of those needs would be met, but we, that's our starting point anyway. And as a reminder, the referendum, we have about, we've identified, at one point, we identified over $300 million worth of projects, and this referendum cannot address every need that we have, but it would clear the deck of 100, about $150 million worth of those projects. And then we do have a very highly functional capital projects group that reviews our needs annually, and they have a budget. So we can just keep tackling those routine maintenance and other improvements as they come along, because this isn't one and done. We'll continue every year to improve our facilities. And then at the bottom are those different topics that people have been asking about. So if you have somebody who said, we already voted no to the turf, but you built it anyway, there's our historical information about how the high school turf came to be and how we split the funding with our boosters. And ironically, I've been reading a lot of board books since like the 50s, trying to put together some information about, for example, the historical referendum. That's like bottom left there. And we just have a history of boosters donating and other groups donating, like the lights in the stadium that just got replaced were used and donated back in the day. And so you can find that by looking at the old minutes. But this is, somebody had asked us to talk about all the different referenda throughout the years. Specifically, this doesn't include operating rate referendum questions, because that is, we're not asking for, at this referendum, for a change to our operating rate, where if, to pay our bills. But we are asking, these are all referendas specifically to improve or build new. And so you can see all the history of the voters. In 1975, there was a referendum that failed, and back in 1975, you were able to put it back on, they put it right back on the ballot again in 1975. They added $1.1 million to it because they decided to build the new Louise White. And then it passed. And you can see all the different additions and new schools and the history of voting in Batavia. Are there, Tony, you came across some FAQs. I don't know. There was a list. So for example, people are asking, there seems to be some misinformation about if this fails, then we're going to decommission two of our schools. Is that true or false, Tony?
That's false.
Okay.
We will, if the referendum passes, we would actually decommission two schools, but we would rebuild them first before we decommission them. And that is a question we get a lot is, well, you're going to tear down these schools and then rebuild them. What are you going to do with the students? Well, that's part of the plan, is that we would build the new schools first and then move them over to the new school and decommission the old. We also have questions about what happens if it doesn't pass. And that is actually answered in, on this website. So if you go up to the top, Holly, and you click on why it matters, it talks about reasons to vote for, reasons to vote against, and what happens if it's unsuccessful. We have a, a lot of things that we need to do to properly take care of our schools and our master facilities plan. This referendum would fund a significant portion of that. And, and if, and if it doesn't pass, then we're going to have to completely rethink what we want to do with our schools. We'll have to go back to kind of the drawing board when it comes to our master facilities plan, because the money just won't be there to do hardly any of what, what we've identified as being needing, what needs to be done. We also had some questions about how we can trust whether or not, you know, we're going to stay up with the maintenance of the schools. That's a concern we hear a lot. And it's kind of along the lines that, you know, why did you let it get this bad? And as you see in that referenda sheet that Holly was displaying earlier and that Lisa was talking about, this is the longest period since 1954 that Batavia community has gone without passing a referendum. That's how we take care of our schools and the bigger projects. Our, our school budget is not built or equipped to deal with the magnitude. That's the purpose of the referendum. We have to ask the community whether or not they want to pay for it, basically what they expect and what they're willing to pay for. So this is the process. It isn't that we didn't properly maintain our schools. We've had some challenges in maintaining our schools, certainly because of the Great Recession primarily and some of the other fiscal challenges that we faced in the intervening years. But like I said, this is the longest period we've gone without investing heavily into our schools and the longest period we've gone without asking since 1954. We also have questions about more details in terms of photos and, you know, they want to know what the conditions are in the school. And so we are working with our individual committees in the schools to give access. We're also, I know Holly and Brad have been working on producing videos and pictures and whatnot of what the conditions are, and you'll see those soon on this website that we've just unveiled. And we've also had some other random questions that I won't go into. But, you know, what we do want to make sure of is that anybody who has a question has an opportunity to ask it and get the answer, not some mythical answer that might be circulating in the community that, you know, people speculate upon. But we want to have them make an informed decision. And I, and that, I believe, I won't speak for the board, but I believe that's why the board placed this question back on the ballot, because there was considerable evidence to demonstrate that there was fundamental misunderstanding and misconceptions about what we were asking for, what we were going to do, and the reason why. And we want to make sure that anybody has an opportunity to make an informed decision based on facts and not on facts.
Anything else? Questions? Thoughts?
Well, I'll just thank you for that. Website looks amazing. There's been quite a few things that I, there are times that I've been able to point people to the website. There's been quite a few things that I, there are times that I've been able to point people to the website for information already since you just put up the impact by school. So, um, it seems pretty, it seems to definitely be addressing the most common questions that I've heard. So, thank you very much for doing this. That's great.
Yeah, I'm going to back that up. The, the old way it was kind of organized, you would quickly fall into a rabbit hole of more information than you need.
Yeah.
And you would be able to find what you wanted. This is a pretty good, just high level, get an understanding of what's going on, get an understanding of the intents at every school without getting every report that had ever been written on the process, so.
And reading everyone before you got your answer, yeah.
Right, right. So, I think this is a good kind of balance between the two right now. And I appreciate hearing that there's more to come on it. And I appreciate the efforts to be able to continually kind of improve the level of informing that's going on.
Okay, thanks, Tony. Um, I'm going to pass it over to Steve for our licensed staff recruiting update.
Yeah, uh, let me start with, um, we have had the opportunity to meet with our high school administration, our middle school administration. We met with our first elementary principal this morning. We'll be meeting with the rest of them this week to talk about staffing plan, thoughts and considerations and numbers for next school week. So, it's kind of, it's that time of the year. The reality is, um, is that we're not going to have, it's highly likely at this point, we're not going to have a ton of openings. Probably the most openings we'll have will be at our high school level and then spread across our district. Special ed teachers, student service teachers and probably EL support. So, those, and that's probably what most high school, or excuse me, what most school districts, um, the state of Illinois would say. The reality also is, is that in the last, um, three or four months, we've had, uh, three, we've had to make three mid-year hires, uh, for our licensed staff. And, um, I'm, I'm really pleased to announce that we had a decent candidate pool. And I believe we found, um, three fantastic people. One or two of them were right before winter break and one was right after winter break. Uh, fantastic people that will, um, serve our, our schools well, uh, for this year and, and hopefully beyond. And in doing so, um, we actually, uh, with two of the three staff members, we not only found great candidates, but we also diversified on our workforce, which I know is a priority. So, you can read on this report, it's a very brief report, I'll fill in some of the blanks, but the goal, I just want to note that that goal was written without the assistance of chat GPT. I'm not sure if it's the greatest sentence I've ever seen in my life, but it did not get any artificial intelligence. So, you can read the five strategy points that I wrote down. I kind of want to fill in the blanks, um, a little bit. You know, first of all, uh, in the past, we've generally posted, I, I would still contend, we would, we posted our positions about as early as anybody and we're, we've always tried to be ahead, um, of surrounding districts in terms of our posting. But we've typically waited, except for maybe a few known, um, difficult positions to hire. We've pretty much waited until after our March board meeting to post, um, most of our positions. We're not going to do that this year. We're going to post anticipated positions, as you can see, um, by this Friday at some point. Because, um, on Monday, a couple of us will be heading out to Northern Illinois for our first job fair. You'll note the second point in the strategy is that we're bringing a team to the job fairs. Um, I will be attending, which typically, when I've done job fairs, it's been me by myself. I'm bringing, uh, Ming Shelby with me and then Brad Vertine will be, uh, supporting us in a few of those because he is, uh, works in our special ed department. And, um, you know, I can talk general about special ed where he can talk a lot deeper about that. In the past, uh, you go to a job fair, you, I, I enjoy them because, uh, I'm a people person and you connect with people and, uh, it's exciting and fun and you kind of get to hear their hopes and dreams. But then really what happens is it really becomes up to the candidate to go and apply. And so, we're kind of flipping that, um, with the help of Holly and my awesome HR team, Michelle Fraga and Becca Haran. They've kind of devised a little, little marketing, uh, boards that have QR codes on them. And so, um, when I, when we finish conversations with people, we're going to direct them right to, um, a QR code that they can pop on their phone and, uh, a very, very simple data collection of your name, your email, your phone number and what positions you're interested in. That will get shot to a spreadsheet. Michelle and Becca will be ready to go. And literally within an hour or two of them getting that information, they will send an email out to any potential candidates, telling them about our school district and giving them links and information about how to apply for the positions that are posted. Again, typically, it wouldn't work that way. I would meet them, I might jot a few notes down, um, informally. And then, you kind of cross your fingers and hope that they end up applying. And when you're, you know, depending on some of these job fairs, the IASPA virtual job fair, for instance, I'm liter- I literally last year, probably about two or three hours time, I probably interacted with ninety people. Because I was literally going back and forth on chat screens, um, just chatting, chatting, chatting. And, um, so overall, um, we're excited because, uh, it's going to be a lot more purposeful. We will have their information and, um, we will have positions posted and we will have our, our principals, um, ready to hire as soon as we are able. So, um, we're excited about this approach. You can see what we have coming up. Northern Illinois State, IASPA, North Central. I've spoken to my colleagues in King County, um, who have had to go out and recruit a lot more than we've had to in Batavia just because of, um, I think our tradition and, uh, the view of our school systems. And, uh, these were some of the top ones that they all recommended, um, I attend. I've been to a few of those in the past. So, we're excited and, uh, to see how this will play out. Couple of things I want to finish up with is that, you know, finding support staff is still probably our number one challenge. This is really about licensed staff members. Um, that will remain a challenge. It's a challenge not only statewide but nationwide. We've had probably between fifteen to maybe seventeen, uh, pair of pros that have not been filled this entire school year, which is absolutely unheard of for our school system. When you do comparative data with, uh, our surrounding colleagues, they're usually at the same level of missing pairs as we are, or even worse. So, we're going to, we have some ideas and some approaches we're going to try and be trying, um, over the course of the next few months that will really set us up hopefully for next year and so it'll intensify, um, later in the summer as, uh, people get a little bit more serious about those positions. I'm very appreciative to, uh, like I said earlier, Becca Haran, Michelle Fraga and Kathy Anger because they're putting together some things that will be on our website that will be very, very detailed information about our benefits. Because that does matter to people. One small anecdote, I had the opportunity to speak with, um, a candidate, a potential candidate, um, for a support staff position, as well as that, uh, potential candidate's spouse, uh, for an extended period of time. Uh, this all happened literally in the last few days. This person was offered a position, um, in a surrounding district that paid them eleven dollars per hour more. And they accepted the, the position in our school system because of the community, because of the school they're going to, because of the hours and because of our benefits. And so, our insurance committee, um, I, I know that they've made some adjustments that have not been easy. Trust me, my wife has had some challenges with some of the things. Um, and Kathy has handled that, uh, very, very well, along with Luke Mu. But the benefits and the HSA and, and some of those things that we have for people, um, for some people, that's a huge driver. Uh, sometimes even more important than the almighty, almighty dollar for them. So, um, that's one anecdote. I know for other people, um, the dollars may be more and I understand that. But, um, so we're going to continue to try to, um, with our, uh, support staff, to try to really, um, capitalize on some of the great things that we offer, um, to hopefully attract more of them. So, that's my report.
Um, I like the fact, Steve, that you sat here last year and said, these are the proactive things we're going to do and, um, that's all in your plan. So, that's awesome.
Yeah, I'd like to say that was a big point of discussion for one meeting we had and I liked it. Now, we're, it sounds like we're being much more aggressive. Like you see someone that looks like a promising candidate. We're now just reacting like, let's go out there and let them know that Batavia's a good place to be. So, we want them to apply and learn more.
All right, next, um, section of our agenda is our action items. The first one is our firewall refresh. So, we're going to invite Dave Thurlbida. Talk to us about that.
Good evening. I'm trying to get all my notes ready here. Sorry, guys. All right, so I am on a five-year plan with this current firewall system we use. Uh, so I am due to replace it this year. Um, due to all our lovely supply shortages and whatnot, I'm kind of coming a little early for this. Uh, it's actually up in May, but we need to get it started now to actually receive in, end of May to take care of things. Um, it is a pretty large number. Uh, this is actually broken out over five years. Uh, so on ballpark, we're like eighty-five, eighty-six K a year on this project. As a firewall, um, this is the top device on any network. So, this is the brain that protects everyone behind it, meaning your laptops, Chromebooks, phones, everything like that. That's what we're using to protect you guys. It's a, not a small number due to the dynamic updates and trying to keep up with AI. We were mentioning some stuff earlier, other things that are attacking on a minute-by-minute basis. Uh, that system handles all those types of attacks. Again, it's a five-year process here, so this is covering for the next five years at the next end of life. So, it's kind of a cycle at that point. So, you guys have any questions or?
I guess I have a question, Dave, so I appreciate you. I know I always ask you a lot of questions because I'm not very tech savvy.
Sure.
But, I mean, could you just kind of explain what a firewall is and how it protects the district's information? But also for our children, how it's protecting them from things parents don't want them looking at.
Yeah, I'm going to be, try to be very broad here. I've ran one for close to twenty years myself at the technical level. So, if I get crazy, tell me. I, I just made some quick notes. Um, so a firewall, as a general consensus here, it's a tool that my team uses. It's a device, it's a piece of gear that we run, similar to what you guys have at home, like a home router. Um, it's what transitions us from our internal stuff to the internet. It's kind of a gatekeeper for the entire district, letting good things in or out and blocking the bad completely out. It's essentially what protects everyone. It also is based on, based like kind of a set of rules that we configure on our end that is helping adjust things, like when we get a request to unblock a website or hey, I want to use this thing, can I use it type of thing? Um, we go through a vetting process as well with a committee here, uh, that we vet something. And if we can allow it, we do, and then we plug it into that and it can get in. I take privacy very seriously, so we're trying to make sure nothing gets out as well. So, social security numbers, things like that, it's also protecting for things like that. You see a lot of stuff in the news for data leaks and things like that. Those are the devices that help prevent. It's never a hundred percent, but we do our best. In this case, the five-year purchase of that, it's also dynamically updating things for that. So, when you find a random file that's out there and it's got a certain name, it will know that name and say, hey, that's bad and thirty other companies blocked it. So, it's a very dynamic approach compared to, you know, a guy in a chair sitting there coding stuff all day, blocking. So, uh, as far as the students, um, we have a lot of features, I guess you could call it, on this device. Uh, one of them I'll mention is content filtering, um, blocking inappropriate websites, bad things that kids could get to. We also can tie that into an application layer, which means like chat, game, Facebook Messenger, other inappropriate things. This device handles all of that. So, it can allow or deny based on certain grade levels if we wanted to or whatever else. Time of day thing, so if you needed to allow something for like a guest that comes in, like we had the robot crew over at the middle school here a week or two ago, we had to allow some stuff for them to get to their robots. So, we did that on a time-based schedule. So, I can allow something for a specific couple hours, things like that. And then, all of this comes down to monitoring and reporting. So, we can help these kids if they get caught into something or if there's some other issues there that we need to kind of steer them away from. Uh, we use a lot of different systems to do this. The firewall is one piece of the full suite that we use. There's a lot of different tools we use to help the kids. This is just kind of a small piece of it, so. Is that a good enough?
That is, yeah. If you can explain it to me, you can explain it to anybody probably, so that's good. So. And then, my only other question, I would say any kind of expense, especially this large, is this was anticipated and this is a thin budget?
Yep. Yep, we try to do everything. I've been trying to move everything to a cycle. And honestly, with this project, it was insane with the market right now. We went from right now, I was saying like eighty-five, eighty-six K a year with a five-year. If I went one year, it was a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. So, that's why we're doing a five-year. That's tech, that's the world right now. I'm trying to do as best I can with it, but that was the only way we could save and get everything we need.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
Other questions?
Yeah, I've, one other question. Again, sorry if this is a little behind the times.
You're fine.
But with the five-year plan and understanding what an important piece of equipment this is and how quickly our world is changing, do we think that this piece of equipment is going to last five years? Is going to be good enough during that period of time for, to meet our needs?
Yep, the way this system works, uh, they overbuild it on purpose because it's dynamically changing every day, practically, every thirty seconds roughly. Um, it's built, and another thing I forgot to mention too, is there are actually two of these for the district. So, as important as the internet is, if one of these breaks, we flip it to the other one. So, part of this is handling the demand of all of our devices. We have, you know, five thousand plus kids, all the staff, all the guests that come in, parents, you name it. On an average, we probably see close to twelve to fifteen thousand people on our network every day. And this, this handles all of that and then some on purpose. So, but the biggest thing is the dynamic updating. That's the way you stay ahead a lot of this stuff. The world's definitely different than it was five years ago too.
Any other questions?
No.
All right, then I would entertain a motion to approve the purchase of two firewalls from Continental Resources in the total amount of four hundred and twenty-nine thousand, one hundred and eleven dollars.
Second.
Moved by Meadows, second by Locke. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposeds? All right.
Thanks, guys.
Thanks, Dave.
Thank you, Dave.
Uh, next item on our agenda is, uh, the approval of the, uh, contract amendment with Quest. And I'm going to hand that over to Josh Bullock.
All right, so what we have here is a request from Quest Food Service, um, to increase our meal rates on lunch and also breakfast on all our schools, the national lunch programs. So, that's our elementary schools and our middle school. So, we'd be looking at a twelve point eight percent increase there on lunch and an eight point five, I think that says five six, the eyes ain't so good, um, on breakfast. This doesn't impact students at all. I, I want to make that very clear. So, what this is dealing with is our reimbursement rate. So, basically what we pay the company to provide the food and then we get a reimbursement from the state on that. And you can see here, um, you know, CPI on all things is different. But on school lunch programs in particular, there's been a three hundred and one percent increase, um, year to year, January to January. Uh, just like we experienced with eggs at the grocery store. So, our partner is asking for this increase to ensure that they can continue to provide, uh, the high-quality food for our students.
Just as a matter of perspective, I think in the Wall Street Journal analysis, the cost of elementary school lunches is the leading increase in terms of inflation out of every other thing that they measure. So, that is what increased the most over the last year, if, if my recollection serves.
Other questions?
I might need this to be simplified for me. I'm not following. We need to, we need to raise our return rate. It's a application with the, with the state or something?
So, the state gives us a meal reimbursement rate, okay? And then, we contracted with Quest a different rate. So, the state gives us this much, we pay Quest this much. So, they're looking for us to do this.
Okay.
So, apologize if this is redundant.
No, it's okay.
But how, how, what happens next year and the year after?
Yeah, so, uh, this year, we're done with our contract with Quest.
Okay.
Um, RAC in November authorized us to go to a non-competitive one-year agreement with Quest. So, we would renegotiate rates with them for one more year. At that point, we'd have to either go to a bid process or a request for a proposal where we would reach out to other providers.
So, but for the, the fall, our rates would be the same?
We have to renegotiate.
Okay. So, that's the one year.
So, this is just an emergency from now till the end of the year.
So, it's probably safe to say that.
It's going to change.
Cost would change.
It's the end of the school year, so.
Right.
What's the estimated cost?
For next year?
No, no, just for the year.
For the rest of this year?
Yeah, I'm just wondering like, does this mean it's going to?
I have it, give me one second.
Oh, like total impact?
Right, because if we're going to be.
Yeah.
Bringing the rate.
It's not going to affect students.
I know that.
Right.
It's going to affect our budget though.
What do we have out of pocket?
Nothing. No.
It impacts our budget.
That's actually where I would like to get, I'll let Josh answer his question, then I'll ask.
Sure.
Essentially, we're getting the discounted price from Quest, but the discount that Quest is giving us is gonna lower.
Yeah, so if we extrapolate this over the rest of the year, it's a sixteen-thousand-dollar shift.
That's not a huge ask.
Okay.
But so to your question, RJ's, it is a budgetary item, but we're getting reimbursement. So it's not really like from the state, correct, on this program?
State and the feds, yeah.
Correct.
So it's not, it's kind of complicated.
So.
Budgeted based on this amount that we're getting back.
We're paying them this much, and then we get reimbursed this. So actually, my understanding is before we had a little bit of a surplus.
Yes, we do, and the surplus is designed to
Administrative.
Cover all administrative costs and taking care of the cafeteria and the equipment that's in it. And so we'll have less to take care of the other aspects of operating food service. You know, what we pay Quest is simply for actually providing the food, but we have to provide the kitchens and the tables and the trays and, you know, all those sort, dishwashers, everything.
So that's where it impacts our budget more, is if we're less to do maintenance and keep them.
Right.
But if we don't do this, would we be at jeopardy of them saying we can't do business with Batavia anymore?
Right now, we're in a, they would have to, they're obligated by to us under contract through the end of this year. But next year, they could say, no, thank you, because that we're doing a one-year extension. Because this, and the state is allowing that right now because of the impacts of the pandemic. And I'm sorry that I'm doing all that.
No, it's okay. I talked to your report. You can talk to mine. That's fine.
And and just some historical perspective. This is the second time of this ask in in four years. Right at the beginning of the pandemic, the same thing happened, them coming to us, asking for an increase. So the children need to have lunch. Children learn best when they're fed and not hungry. This is not a nice-to-have. This is a need-to-have. But I also want to articulate that this is the second time that we've been asked, although this is unprecedented times in both cases.
I think it's also important to look at like districts in the surrounding area. So Tony and I went and asked ten different schools, the local area, what's your meal reimbursement rate? And even with this increase, we are still the lowest in the area. So, you know, a lot of time was put into making sure that, one, we're being good partners, but also that we're being responsible for our students.
And how long have we been partners with Quest?
I would have to defer to Tony on that.
Yeah, I can't remember.
So this is, we're finishing our second five-year, it's gotta be.
And they've been a very good partner to us.
Excellent to work with. They're one of my favorite companies to work with.
This is not an issue that's limited just to this. I mean.
Right.
I think the the statistic, I think that you see here, the three-hundred-one percent, that being
Leading all other areas of the economy in terms of cost, is that's driving.
I am seeing things where we've got things that are under contract, link specific costs that are set and contractors or others are going, I'm walking if you don't pay me.
Yeah, they just can't afford.
You can rebid it, but you're gonna pay it anyway. So you might as well stay with the partner you have. It's it's a terrible position to be in, but I appreciate the fact that through foresight or happenstance, that buffer is kind of there. But I do appreciate understanding that it does eat away at saved money to do the bigger costs later, like a new kitchen or new equipment or whatever else.
Any other questions? All right, then I would entertain a motion that we approve an emergency contract amendment for the remainder of the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three school year in regard to the meal reimbursement rates delineated below.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Meitzler, second by Kilburg, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, next item is a a dual Josh and David topics. I'm gonna throw it to whoever's gonna talk.
I'm up here, so I'll just, I'll just keep the mic if you don't mind. All right. So just like Dave was talking about with the firewall, there's certain expenses that occur on a recurring basis. So this is one of those. So our copy printers usually are replaced every five years. We got six years out of the ones that we currently have, but it is time to get new models. So the ask is that the board authorize the approval to purchase these new copy scanners. And again, the goal is to keep them for five years, but we'll own them, so then we can make that decision based on usage. If we can make them last longer, we monitor them through a service called Paper Cut, so we can see how they're being used and then make that determination in the future.
And since I'm already talking to your board reports.
Yeah, just just go for it.
I'm just gonna throw one more thing in there. The tricky thing about of copy machines is that when they break down, they can be very problematic in a school. And as they age, these are mechanical devices that push paper through them very fast. And as they age, they kind of wear out and they start to break down more. And two things happen. One, the maintenance contract that we pay on those machines gets much more expensive. And so because the maintenance guy is coming out more often. And two, the copier is down more often. And the teachers start pulling their hair out. So it's not a good idea to make copiers last longer than they ought to when it comes to these sorts. Doesn't lead to to good things.
We may have tried that.
It does not.
Yeah, you know, sometimes it makes sense and sometimes it doesn't.
That's right.
How how many printers do we currently have?
Forty-six.
So we're just replacing every single printer?
Yeah.
Well, we actually have forty-eight. We're keeping two. The one at the maintenance shop is not used at all. It's made approximately eleven thousand copies in six years. That's nothing. So we own it, so we have the opportunity to keep it, and we're keeping the same company, so they're keeping the same source. And then there is one other one at Rotolo, which is for the Project Leadaway classroom. I don't remember the exact number on that one, because I was giving Mark a hard time about the eleven thousand copies. But that one also is so lightly used that we're keeping that one.
Do you all consider it a rotation program or keeping the ones that we have? Or do we get money back for turning in these forty-six?
We do. Yeah.
You just approved that.
Yeah.
Didn't we used to have like a rotating thing, like?
We used to do just a lease and and the company would come and take them.
A lease, yeah.
Yeah.
Like, maybe I'm dreaming of something else, but I thought it was like.
We've tried different models over the years.
A third and a third and a third. Maybe that's the Chromebook.
The leasing didn't work well partly.
But I knew we leased them. Yeah.
We had to give them back and then take a cut from that. So it never worked out in the long run, because then you also can't run longer in the tooth if they're buying, like these ones that only have so many numbers on them that we could keep using. You couldn't do that. You'd be buying another fifty-thousand-dollar copier at that point.
But we do rotate them when they make sense. I know we do, you know, some machines that are not being used as often will put into a place that is in, yeah, so that we can get more life out of them. Yeah.
It's having like six years. Any other questions?
I I have my question that I always ask. So this was an anticipated expense and this is within budget?
Yes, that is correct.
I'm a broken record down here.
Is this the same company that you've we've used?
This is the same company.
So you, that's amazing. So after six different proposals, still this one was the best?
Significantly, yes.
It matched what we had, which was awesome.
Okay.
That's rare in this market right now. I can tell you that. From what came in, it's insane.
Thank you.
Anything else? All right, then I would entertain a motion to approve the purchase of forty-six, not forty-eight, forty-six, Konica Minolta multi-function print devices for the total amount of two-hundred-and-forty-one thousand, five-hundred-and-twenty-seven dollars from Konica Minolta.
Second.
Moved by Meitzler, second by Locke, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, now I'm assuming the service agreement that you're asking us about is connected to this.
Yes. Yes, it's unfortunately like when you buy a big purchase like a car, you buy the car, and then you go into the room and you discuss the, you know, warranty. That's what we have here. So this is the service agreement. It's a five-year service agreement. And what's great about this is it locks in the service rate for those five years. There's no planned escalation in that service agreement. It just is set. And they actually match the service agreement that they gave us in the last timeframe.
Is there a reason why there's not a dollar amount on here?
Yeah.
Because it's by page per, like the copy per page.
Okay.
So it varies depending on usage. So if we use it a lot, we pay more for the service. If we don't use it, we don't pay for the service.
This covers those two extra ones you were saying a minute ago, too?
Yes.
Because they're printing like what?
All forty-eight?
All five pages a month?
All five pages.
They matched our prices.
They matched.
They matched, okay. Yeah, okay.
Yes.
All right, then I would entertain a motion to approve a five-year service agreement with Konica Minolta to support our multi-function print devices.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Meitzler, second by Meadows, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, last item on the agenda is not a Josh and Dave. This is a Rob. Purchase of office furniture.
Good evening. My topic's a little more fun than copiers. I'm here to ask you to approve the purchase of office furniture for the new main offices at JB Nelson and Alice Gustafson Elementary School and the reorganization of the ECC office as we split those two apart. The total's sixty-nine thousand dollars. That's basically fourteen spaces in the two buildings, including the new respite room, which we do not have in the existing buildings right now. Those will be an add. I know I've been asked about reusing and refurbishing existing furniture that we already have. That furniture will already be accounted for in especially Alice Gustafson. All the main office furniture is staying in the ECC office, so everything will need to be new in the new main office. And as far as JB Nelson goes, we will be repurposing all the furniture there except for the reception desk, which will be demolished to make room for the new use of that open office space.
Questions?
Can you explain a little bit about Sourcewell and cooperative purchasing?
Sourcewell is, it's already, it's a state-run pre-bid service. We use this typically with mechanical equipment as well. So when we're going and getting prices, those have already been bid out and approved through the state, so we don't have to worry about individually going out to bid with different companies. We can go through one company who we work with, who provides, who will provide the furniture and who will install it. And it's hard, the prices have already been vetted out.
All right, then I would entertain a motion to award Lowery McDonald Company a contract to provide office furniture at JB Nelson Elementary School and Alice Gustafson Elementary School in the sum of sixty-nine thousand dollars.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mathis, second by Meitzler, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. Those were all of our action items tonight. We do have a closed session on the agenda, but there will be no action afterwards. So I'm going to turn it over to administration comments before we move to closed session.
Ninety-nine percent of my comments have already been covered through our discussions and our celebrations today, but I would like to add one more celebration Cindy and Holly and the rest of the people who helped put together kindergarten meet and greet. It was last Thursday night here and two-hundred-and-thirteen families showed up. There were two-hundred-and-fifty-one that signed up, but the weather took a turn last Thursday, so I think it kept a couple people out. So that's a really large number. It's not our entire kindergarten class. It's just those that got our messages and signed up to come and meet their principals and turn in all their registration documents. So they registered, collected, Cindy and her team collected two-hundred-and-thirty, thirteen registration packets from families. So they processed processed it all that night. Nice job. And Holly did all the communicating and collecting of the names. So lots of assistance from others in the district as well. So that's it for me.
All right, thanks. Aaron, we'll start with you. Aaron Meitzler.
Everyone, just stay safe with the upcoming weather coming and make it to school on time and safe tomorrow. I know we had some twisting of the arm, but it looks like we'll be there, so.
Yep, see y'all tomorrow.
Every once in a while, I need to look at the weather. I was like, what are you talking about? RJ.
I'm really proud and excited about all the different awards for the teachers and faculty. That was really exciting. Lisa is the first person that I've been able to, or that I've had my children work with. So my oldest daughter is doing violin and she signed up for violin for sixth grade, so she's loving it. So congrats again to all the teachers and then Lisa. I'm looking forward to my children, you know, working with all the other instructors or other other faculty, so that'll be exciting. I didn't throw this out there during the sideband committee, but I wanted to comment that I was shocked. I got the number here. There's a hundred and thirty kids that are on the cross-country team for sixth grade, which is just amazing to me. I guess it's like twelve, it's twelve percent of the school. And I brought up before at the end of the meeting, Steve, I was like, why do kids love to run so much? But apparently the 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 coaches and all the, yeah, the assistants just do a great job with it. And I know every time I drive around here, you see somebody running, so. We'll we'll see if my kids get involved in it, but it's it's nice. I, you know, it was a new little thing to be a little bit proud of here. So that was an interesting tidbit, nugget of knowledge for you. Besides that, I've got nothing else to say. Thank you.
I'm just gonna say again, congratulations relations to all the teachers. I'm gonna extend, though she's not here, maybe she'll hear about it, but personal appreciation for Lisa Hatfield again, because I I see with both my kids and every other kid that I'm involved with in music, they've all just basically started there and kind of grew from that. And so it really goes to show what like kind of good foundation does to help build confidence and kind of that reinforcement structures they move along. To kind of cap that off, Holly and others put out a kind of note about the Batavia Wind Symphony performing at what's called IMEC, which is Illinois Music Educators Council, something along that lines. It's basically an audition thing, and we got an opportunity to hear preview with the five schools, three of the five schools that get invited every year to go perform there. And Batavia's done it a couple times, but it's it's kind of like the Super Bowl for like the Wind Symphony level. You have to be kind of like, stop laughing at me.
Not laughing.
But no, I mean, I just wanted to press, put that out there, because all the years.
She's appreciating your passion.
She is, I know. All the years I've seen it and I've heard my oldest went, I had no idea that it was kind of like such a kind of an honor for them to be able to get selected to go perform solely for a bunch of music educators, you know, and and be kind of, take advantage of that. So I'm gonna end with that one, but thank you. And be safe tomorrow, apparently.
Apparently.
Yes.
Interesting comment for RJ, because all three of my children ran cross-country and at least one had all four of the educators that were here tonight, probably, I think, multiple of them. So, yeah, we offer amazing opportunities in this district. That's why I've always loved it. I have no other comments. Usually I wait till last, but I wanted to throw my two cents in.
I agree with what everybody else has said, although my kids had Ms. Offelman, I believe, before she got married, so that's how long my kids had, the music teacher, I think. And please take advantage of the updated website and educate yourself on the referendum.
Can I add something to that?
Sure.
So quick, I'm sorry. I just remembered that we're gonna have four members representing at two different functions last night, tomorrow, last night, tomorrow night.
Yes.
BF, or Thursday night. I know, I'll be at BSPN.
With me.
With you. Surprising me now, thanks. So and then I think we'll also be at, there's another.
The boosters.
The boosters as well, so if anyone wants.
Come and ask us questions.
To come up and talk what I want about it, feel free. Please be there.
Good reminder. Thanks, RJ.
My turn? I'll finish it off. So yes, I want to congratulate all the teachers. If we could start every board meeting with that celebration like that, it would be great. I also want to say thank you to everybody in the community that emails us, that reaches out. Thank you for everybody who stayed for the bulk of the meeting or the end. I appreciate that. So thank you for that. I do want to thank Cindy and Holly and Amy Nelson for the kindergarten, the two-hundred-and-thirteen for the meet and greet. I was happened to, I used to take a lot of home videos and I was watching my daughter, who's a junior now, her first day of kindergarten. And, you know, lots of anxiety, lots of tears, and that's how we see the parents. And so that's really crucial. I think that first interaction, so thank you for that. And then I'll end with something. I I just want to thank all of our business partners that support BPS 101. I attended a fundraiser for my youngest's grade school at Pal Joey's. And John Hamels, about as big a partner as you could have for BPS 101. She was here earlier, Karen Cheeseman, but she put it together. It was a first-time event. And the response was crazy. And basically, within like two days, they had over, I think, a hundred or two-hundred responses. John was gonna reserve a room, and he just said, I'll just close the whole restaurant for three hours, so you guys can have your event. I don't know how many proprietors would do something like that. So.
So I don't mean to give a plug just for Pal Joey's, but all of our partners, but those are the types of partnerships that build community and make Batavia the place it is, so I just want to say thank you to those people.
For that reminder, Aaron. As I said, we do have closed session, but no action after. So I would entertain a motion to adjourn to closed session for the reason of collective negotiating matters between the public body and its employees or their representatives or deliberations concerning salary schedules for one or more classes of employees.
So moved. Second.
Move by Meitzler, second by Locke, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, we're gonna adjourn to closed session. Can you unplug me quick? Please, please.